7:00 PM. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order of March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, we are conducting this meeting virtually. This meeting is being recorded. At this time, let's do a roll call for the planning board members. Ms. Orbital. I see her.
Haley, can you say something? I'm not sure we can pick you up yet.
It looks like you're still muted.
No, she's not.
Oh. All right, we'll come right back to you. Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Sayah.
Yes.
Mr. Buzzet.
Here.
And Mr. Flint.
Yes, and I'll be dropping in and out because I've got a CPC meeting at the same time, so.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Will you be here at the like the 7:30-ish timeframe or when we switch over to the public hearing part?
I.
Continue.
If we need a quorum, so I'm counting, I mean, we're just continuing, so it's like we would have a quorum without me, so.
Okay. Um, all right, did I get everybody? Okay, and then Haley, can you hear us or can we hear you now? No, there's still some mute issue. Can we still count her here for now?
Um. Yeah, I mean, Haley, you can you can hear the discussion and everything, right?
You can use chat if you need to. Okay, well, chat us if you need to, and we'll try to figure out how to. Did we ask her to unmute? Was it the same thing that I had?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Kristen, there's someone who's labeled IED. If you could ask them to identify themselves.
Thank you, that'd be great. So if you are on the meeting, we can see your names, and so we can call on you in case you raise your hand or would like to comment during the public comment period time. Can you just put your full name so we can see who you are? So I see there's one initials, we just don't know who you are, it says IED. That would be helpful. So a couple of things on the agenda for tonight. We're going to start with the MAPC revised Thorough Depot redevelopment vision and draft zoning presentation. So I think we probably have a lot of folks on the line for that, which is great. After that, we were scheduled to have the public hearing for the project on Main Street, the subdivision. The applicant has requested to continue it, so we're not going to discuss that tonight. Well, that will be continued, we'll vote to continue that till November 10. Then we have a couple of A and Rs, and then we're talking about potential zoning bylaws, including the Massachusetts model floodplain bylaws. We're going to be having a discussion about that in preparation for what we would do for coming town meetings. And then at the end, if you have public comment that is not on one of those items, we would reserve that for the end. So with that, I'm about to turn it over to Chris from MAPC to present. Thanks for giving us the presentation. One of the things that we wanted to do was hear from the property owners in the Thorough Business District. I don't know if Elizabeth, anybody has contacted you or expressed any interest in kind of participating with us during this process.
So I did send emails out to at least all of the property owners that we had contact information for. So I did not get any questions coming back, but so.
Okay, well, I appreciate you doing that. I just want to make sure that we kind of make sure that we invite them to participate in the process as early on as we can. So with that, let's start with Chris and MAPC, please.
Hi, everybody, I'm going to share my screen if I can. It says I'm disabled, is there a way to allow me to share my screen to show my PowerPoint?
You should be able to share.
It says host disabled attendee screen sharing.
Oh, okay, so Nancy will need to change that.
Hi, Chris, I just did, so try it now, please. Is that working?
It is, thank you, okay. So what I thought would make sense to start tonight would be to just take a step back for a minute and kind of just look at where we're at in the process. You this, we've been working on this now for actually over a year since we've started, and this has always been intended by the town as a zoning project. I think what we started kind of early on realized that it maybe made sense to, before diving into the zoning, back and focus on what is the actual vision for this area and think about that holistically and before getting into the zoning, and the zoning would, of course, try to implement that vision. We started during the pre-COVID times, so we did just to the to the earlier comment, one of our first meetings was a landowners meeting, so we, that one, we did have that in November of 2019. And I would just say that, you know, from the number that attended, they were, they all were very positive with this process. So hopefully they'll continue to be engaged with it. And of course, we also had that open house that was right before, I think, the pandemic hit. And then we worked, started virtually. And the vision plan sort of they had overlap with the zoning because the recommendations from the vision plan were included, some kind of the first draft of the zoning recommendations. So we're about halfway through this process now. The last time I was here, I provided a kind of a comprehensive first draft of the zoning bylaw. I think maybe in hindsight, it was a little tough to digest because it was a lot and maybe it's a little bit too open-ended. So what we're going to do tonight and the next two meetings is break this up now into some chunks. So tonight, we're going to focus more again on the format of the zoning. So specifically where, you know, does the, does this live within the bylaw? And then we'll have a more detailed discussion on the combined business residence use. And then we'll also touch upon the other uses within the, within the district. And then the next time I come back, we'll talk about the dimensional standards and design guidelines. And after that, we'll discuss the parking requirements and any other sort of lingering issues. And at that point, I think we'll have a nice sort of comprehensive bylaw that's now been through some iterations. And at that point, we can have another sort of public forum that is, you know, hopefully larger sort of focused to get public input. So with that, I'm actually going to hand it off to Elizabeth to talk about the first part, which is the zoning format.
So taking a look at the document that Chris, you know, put together and at the last meeting that the board discussed this, the document that Chris provided first, you know, looked at possibly, you know, a new section eight. And he and I had a chance to talk after that meeting, and he has a little bit better understanding of the complexity of the zoning bylaw. And you can't, you know, just change, change a number in the bylaw because it has this ripple effect throughout the whole entire bylaw. So taking a look at relying on the conversation that the board had about potential zoning bylaw amendments and the board specifically talking about pulling out design review criteria and guidelines and putting that into, you know, a separate document and not having those aspects in the zoning bylaw. It made it much easier to try and fit any zoning bylaw amendments into the current zoning bylaw. So tonight, you know, taking a look at the combined business and residence would be establishing this new, a completely new section, 7.11. Currently, that section seven stops at 710. So this would be a new, I'm going to say, like a standalone section for just the thorough business, Thorough Depot Business District that outlines all of these different provisions that the board is discussing, whether that's different uses or whether you have different setback requirements, you know, on the Sudbury, you know, road portion of the district compared to the Thorough Street District. So all of those different items would be, you know, in this new section, 7.11. And then in the other sections, such as 4235, which is the combined business residence section currently in the bylaw, you would add a new section that says for the Thorough Business, you know, Thorough Depot Business District, go look at this new section, 7.11. That's done in a couple of places already in the zoning bylaw, so it's not introducing anything new. And then looking at the table of uses, there was currently the Thorough Depot Business District is in the same column with Concord Center, Nine Acre Corner, and West Concord Business. So you would actually have to, you know, physically take Thorough Depot out of that combined column and, you know, basically create a new column in Table 1, which is the principal uses and Table 2 accessory uses. Under section six, it talks about the dimensional regulations, and that's where you have your setbacks, your lot sizes and all of the dimensional issues, whether it's waivers or other, you know, criteria. Again, you would just go back and reference this new section, 711. And that goes for the same thing with the table, you would just reference this new section. I think if one more, there you go. Um, and again, it kind of just flows throughout the rest of the document. In the parking, there's likely to be, you know, different parking requirements for the Thorough Depot Business District. And there's the ability to add a new subsection in a certain, you know, at a certain point in the zoning bylaw under parking for the Thorough Depot Business. And then, as I said, you'd have this new section, 7.11, which in that section is where you would then cross-reference and say, you know, for for these other design criteria, go to the Concord Village Design Guidelines. And that's where you would get into, you can't have, you know, so many feet of windows along the street and all the other different aspects that go into design criteria and not actual uses or dimensional requirements or parking, which is a zoning aspect. So I don't know, Kristen, if you want to stop here and have a discussion about this and have the board ask questions or.
I mean, I think that's a good time to pause and just see because we, as they mentioned, we were thinking that it might be its own section because it was very specific. Any questions about this proposed path forward from the board? And is there anything else we need to do to bring Linda up to speed? Because we did just kind of plunk her down in this.
Um, I'm, so I've extended to Linda, and I hope she knows that. And as all the board members know, I, Nancy and I put together her stack of planning board materials, and it's, you know, roughly, you know, this thick, and that's why planning board members are a five-year term and not a three-year term because of that learning curve. So I think as this project goes forward, you know, Linda and I can have, you know, separate Zoom meetings and I can kind of, you know, drill down into that, that learning curve of the complexities of the zoning bylaw. But if, Linda, if you have just an initial question right now, please.
Yes, my only initial question would be on the face of it, what are the, I don't know if we've enumerated this here for or not, but what are the special considerations for the Thorough District relative to the other villages that are, you know, set apart already? I just, are there some key elements that we are really focused on here for the Thorough area?
Um, yes, and that goes back to Chris's zoning. Chris's zoning memo that he did. I think it was in August, correct, Chris?
I can't keep track of when I wrote the memo, but I'm happy to reshare it.
No, no, it's on, it's on the board's, planning board's goals and projects page. And so, yes, it was from August, and it's the Thorough Depot redevelopment MAPC draft zoning analysis, August 2020. And so in that document, Linda, is where it begins to frame all the, you know, the differences and thing, different things that are being considered relative to the Thorough Depot Business, the current zoning and how to possibly amend that zoning to, you know, accommodate those items that were identified in the envisioned Concord Comprehensive Long Range Plan and the idea for a redevelopment of the Thorough Depot Business District. As far as the, how it relates to the other two village districts, each, there are similarities in all three, and then there's, there's differences as well, so. So I don't know.
I'll get that reference. I had seen the other public forum and presentation, but I didn't see the document from August. I'm sorry about that, you know.
No worries. So what you and I can do is, you know, kind of. And that maybe, what I would suggest is that particular meeting that Chris shared that is, was, you know, it was a Zoom meeting, so it is on the Minuteman Network. So there is a video of that meeting, so it might be good, you have you, you know, watch that video, and then you and I can schedule a meeting and have a discussion to kind of bring you up to speed of where they are.
Thanks, and but Linda, your questions are good because we could have people from the public kind of joining us at different parts of the process. So I feel like it's always good to kind of make sure we're all thinking the same thing. Were there any other questions from the board about an approach that Elizabeth just went over?
I have a question, but just a comment, and that's to say, I think from the beginning, when we were first talking about this, I think I was in favor of having it as its own, its own section in Table 1. Does that just makes it cleaner and easier to work with, I think?
Good, okay, what, go ahead.
Oh, so I was just going to see if Haley had fixed her. Fixed your sound or if you called in.
We can't hear you yet.
How about now?
Yeah, okay, so you did call in, great, perfect, thank you.
All right, you want to continue, Chris, and we'll try to get some more questions to you.
Sure, and just me, the one last thing I would say in terms of the format. Last, the feedback last time was to take out the design guidelines. I think originally, we're thinking it would be all part of the bylaw in this kind of 711. But I think, you know, there's pros and cons either way, and I think this approach, you know, is a good one by having separate design guidelines, they can be amended a lot easier, they can be adopted by the planning board. And as long as it's, since it'll be referenced in the bylaw, it'll still sort of carry, I think, the same weight. So I think, I think this is a reasonable way to move forward. So the next thing I wanted to talk about was the combined business residence use. You know, the, in terms of achieving the vision, allowing or in having mixed-use development was, I think, critical to this area. And your combined business residence is sort of your mixed-use provision, and it already does exist and is allowed within Thorough. But I think we identified some potential issues that I think could be hampering it. So this is, you know, one of the areas that we're proposing to, to make some changes, you know, only for Thorough because we just don't want to have unintended effects to the rest of town. I think these could be appropriate townwide, but for now, we're just focusing on Thorough. So there were three kind of issues that kind of rose to the top to me. So I will just quickly go through this. If you feel like you've already seen this enough and want me to stop, then, you know, we can just stop. But the three issues, first, the existing provision allows what vertical mixed use, so meaning the same building is allowed to be mixed use, but doesn't necessarily allow single-use buildings that form a mixed-use development on the same parcel. And I think what's really critical and what came through on the vision is along the roadways, that's where it's really important to have the commercial use, or most important, I should say, to have the commercial use, especially on the ground floor. So I think we definitely want to ensure that that still is the case. But there could be cases, especially if you have, you know, like thinking about the Crosby Market parcel, which is quite large, where it actually might be difficult financially and from a market perspective to have commercial uses on the ground floor of every single building. And so allowing single-use buildings in the interior of a parcel, just it adds some flexibility. So that's one recommendation. The second kind of issue that we identified, it has to do with the requirement for affordable units. You know, I've said this before, and I just want to emphasize again that at MAPC and me personally, we are very strong supporters of having a requirement for inclusionary zoning. So I don't want to, you know, in any way suggest that you shouldn't have it. But I am nervous and afraid that the current level is too high for this area, especially where you have a number of smaller parcels. And the requirement is that once you have four units or more, you have to have 20% of the units be affordable. At this threshold, especially on smaller parcels, I think it would be very difficult to pencil out for a developer. And frankly, for a really small parcel, if you were only able to build four units, there's actually no incentive to build that fourth unit. A developer would only build three market rate units. So our suggestion would be for, at least for smaller projects, to lower the requirement. So maybe, you know, five or more units, five to 10 units might be 10% affordable. And then after 10 units, then you could go up to the 20%. Even at that, 11, 12 units, I think that might be a little tough to make it pencil out, but I think it's at least reasonable, more reasonable. But again, that's the actual number, something we want, we'd want to get some feedback from, from the board and the public on. And then the final aspect has to do with the requirements for the open space. Today, it's twice the gross floor area of the residential portion is required to be open space, which admittedly can be reduced by a special permit, but that, that's still a very high number, especially on some of the smaller parcels to hit. So, you know, what we've seen more often is having a percentage of a lot area. And so we are suggesting 15% and that potentially be able to be lowered or reduced through off-site improvements. The other aspect related to open space was that one of the things that came through from the vision was that the public really wants open space, open spaces, so not private open spaces like a yard for someone, but actually publicly accessible open spaces. Obviously, there's no town-owned land here to put a park, but one of the ways we can structure the zoning is to ensure that at least a portion of the open space is publicly accessible, and that's something that we're seeing more and more in zoning bylaws. So those are the three concepts. Here, I've done a, written a draft of which you've seen before from the previous bylaw. It's just lifted out here of how that would, could be structured. The open space requirements would reference another part within this, what I guess is now going to be section 711. And, and that's something that we'll discuss when we talk about the design next week. Before we pause, maybe I'll just very briefly just finish up on the uses. In terms of the broad table of uses for this second, for this district, the feedback that we got last time was that it really should just track the West Concord Village Business District. So that's, you know, we're obviously, of course, open to any feedback you have to make any sort of nuances or changes, but that's basically what we're planning on tracking as of now. So we'll stop there, I can go back to, to maybe this table is maybe most helpful, but um. Take any feedback you have.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
One question, Chris, so on the affordability requirement, I guess it's 10% affordable for five to 10 units. That means no affordable requirement up to five and then one affordable unit for, if you're building between five and 10, right, effectively?
Yeah, that's, yes, that's what it would be, I believe.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understand that.
Yeah, again, if you had four units. If I was a developer, you know, from, and I'm trying to maximize my profit, I just wouldn't build that fourth unit. I would just say I'm just going to build three market rate units because otherwise I have to do four units, one of which is subsidized, affordable, and that is, I'd lose money on that.
I think it's helpful to, you know, have these buckets that you have it in so that we can think about how the solutions are going to address kind of those bigger pictures, so thank you. Other, other comments, questions from board members?
Maybe one other question, so on the, on the open space, allow reduction through improvements to off-site open spaces within neighborhood. Is there a mechanism for that? Is it, is it a funding mechanism or how does that work?
I've seen in, I think off the top of my head, NADIC has one where it's, yeah, essentially like a payment in lieu where they, there it goes to a fund. It could also, I think, reasonably be direct improvements that a developer would agree to make. But that's, so I think there's, it could be either of those options.
Okay, but the idea is you have a baseline 15% remains open, a preference for open space that's actually open to the public, not just residents or users of the, of the building. And then if you're reducing down from 15%, then there needs to be some, some compensatory off-site improvement?
Exactly.
I see, okay. And do you have a sense right now, I mean, in, let's say, on Thorough Street, what that looks, what percentage of the lot area, I mean, are we actually at 2X gross, gross floor area, do you think? And I presume open space doesn't include parking, right?
Right, it wouldn't, so I think especially on Thorough Street, it would be impossible, basically. You know, those are very small parcels that are very tight right now that if you tried to have someone put half of the area as open space and half parking, it just, it would be probably impossible.
Yeah, it seems antithetical to a compact business district.
Exactly.
I'm surprised about that, yeah, okay, thanks.
So to follow up on that thread of Burton's comment and the smaller, you know, the smaller lots on Thorough Street, for many of them, there's, there's no ability to provide open space. So I think that, you know, needs, that distinction needs to be made between, you know, those different lots and how you, how you go about addressing that issue.
Well, we had talked about even calling them. Well, we had talked about even calling them two separate business districts, right? Did we decide that that really isn't practical?
You know, when we had decided, we were, I was mostly thinking at the time about the setbacks and the character of the street that Sudbury would have versus Thoreau. And so the main thing to me was that it could be a different setback along those two streets. That was mostly necessary. I didn't think so much about at the time about the open space. We still could go back to the idea of having two districts. It just, this is quite a small area that splitting it up into two districts. I thought instead, you know, the way that you would deal with this issue would be that for a small parcel or the parcels along Thoreau Street, they could be, that's where there's that opportunity. If they can't meet 15%, you can then reduce it through some agreement with the board.
And might that be a special permit or?
Yes.
And then with the accompanying conditions or something, whatever is decided?
I think it would be special permit, yes.
Can you go back up to the zoning bylaw format slide or two? That's perfect, thanks. So in thinking about kind of how this would go forward and your timeline was helpful, and we'd be talking about perhaps a fall special town meeting. Would, would the goal be to prepare all of the zoning bylaws and present them to a town meeting at one time? There's, there's no way really to phase it in, is there? Okay.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think you could, I don't think you could phase it in because they're, you know, they all work as, as one district and the requirements for one district.
Yeah, so I just, yeah, I wanted to make sure we, you know, we're wrapping our heads around this. And so it would be, you know, a pretty big package to put together and then educate the community about and then present.
From a warrant, from a warrant article standpoint, it's, it's not a, it's not a very difficult warrant article because, you know, so for like just adding, you know, add a new section, 4.2.3.5 in the Thoreau Depot Business District, alternative provisions apply. Section 711. So that, that educating, you know, getting the feedback from the, you know, the property owners, the businesses, the community on all these, you know, these different elements that we're talking, going to be talking about, you know, such as right now, the, those aspects of the combined business residence, you know. And, you know, I think it's end of November, Chris, or no, end of, beginning of December. You know, Chris is going to come back and the next focus discussion, you know, may be just parking or the dimensional requirements. And so after the board has all of these focused discussions and, you know, has a consensus on how to move forward, you're going to be basically drafting this new section 711.
Okay.
And that's where, you know, that's where the education piece and the feedback piece is going to happen.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't expect anybody to say, you know, to, you know, tell the board or tell me, you know, oh, well, you can't, you can't add 4.2.3.5. That doesn't make sense.
Okay.
The format side of it, I don't, I don't think will be, you know, I don't see that as being an issue.
Right, so it's, we're going to, there's going to be a comprehensive section 7.11 and then the changes that you reference here that would, in those other sections that point to 711 and the principal uses.
Yeah, so I don't know. I think, let me see. All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to stop you for a second, Chris. And so this is the document that, you know, Chris had put together that's on the website. And, you know, at the very, at the very end was going to be this new section, section eight. So instead of, instead of it being, you know, formatted this way, this is just going to be section 7.11. And then it will probably, you know, flow very similar, you know, to this as far as, you know, the purpose and, you know, dimensional standards. And, you know, the wording will be the same wording for, as the rest of the bylaw. So you have dimensional standards. And then this is where, you know, you know, the board, we need to talk about height. And then, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure of building length and glazing and vertical facade. Those would be things that would be pulled out of zoning and put into the design guidelines.
Okay.
And then as you go, you know, horizontal, you know, all of those things would be taken out of the zoning bylaw. So the, you know, the actual text in the zoning bylaw is going to be, you know, those dimensional standards, the uses and the parking.
Okay.
Could I just add maybe, real quick, that I think in the end, the, the main difference is going to be this combined business use. That's like, in my mind, the biggest difference. I think the dimensional standards will be maybe a little bit tweaked, like the setbacks, but I think those are fairly minor. And then now that we're taking out the design guidelines into a separate document, I think the actual zoning won't be too extensive.
Okay. So, you know, for the board and for the public that are listening and I'll ask for public comment in a minute. It's, you know, as we just saw, we've got this draft, you know, by law language. And over the course of several meetings in the future and getting kind of more public comment, we're going to refine what's in there, including pulling out the design standards, as Elizabeth mentioned. So, you know, even though we have this draft document that says, you know, these are proposed height limits and things like that, we will get to make sure that we come to agreement on that before we propose it in town meeting, so. I did want to hear from the public because I know some people are on the call for asking questions about this and giving their opinions. But did anybody else from the board want to ask anything at this point?
So, I mean, the, it's going to, to advance this project, it's going to be, you know, important. And this can be, you know, a subsequent agenda item that gets even more focused is, you know, looking at the current table of uses and, you know, have the board just go through, you know, this is a yes, this is, you know, this is a special permit, this is a yes. And whether any of those specific uses need to be changed as this moves over to this, its own Thoreau Depot Business column. So, you know, that would, that needs to be discussed because as you, as you talk about a combined business residence, you have to be aware of all of the allowed business uses. And, you know, in the district, are there, are there ones that, you know, there, it's currently a yes, but it really doesn't make sense. So, so, I mean, that can definitely be a more focused conversation that, you know, the board can have. You know, I don't, I don't think Chris needs to be there for that and we can just send him, you know, here's, here's the new table of uses for the Thoreau Business, Thoreau Depot Business.
So that would be different than the two future board meetings and public forum, right?
Correct.
All right, so yes, plenty of work to do on this. And there will be time for public comment on specific topics. As you saw, as Chris presented, like, we're going to kind of really narrow in on a few in subsequent meetings. But there is initial feedback from the public on what was presented tonight. We'd like to hear that. But I, I just want to make sure, is it clear how the public can participate? Because I didn't see this, oh, there, I see a raised hand function now, okay. So please raise your hand. We can call on you and then we'll invite you to unmute yourself so you can speak your comment. Please say your name and your address for the record. So I see, and Elizabeth, if I call their name, do you or Nancy want to do that? Okay, so I see Stephen Bader.
Hi.
Yep, we can hear you.
Stephen Bader, Seven River Street. With respect to the affordable housing requirements, as was discussed, if you start requiring something at four, you'll get three. If you start something at five, you'll get four, or you might get those lower numbers. So instead of having a step methodology, wouldn't it make sense to have a continuously progressive scale? And if the rounded number of units didn't work out to whole units, you work out some sort of payment in lieu of that nth unit as payments into the Concorded Affordable Housing Trust or some sort of mechanism like that. So that even a three-unit development still generates something, if not a unit, at least some funding for affordable housing, maybe in the development next door, but I just put that out there.
So as an example, you know, however this scale would work, if it's, you know, 10% of the units, you know, up to 10 units, but if it's, you know, less than, you know, if it's less, you know, if it's 1.4, you know, you can provide one, you know, if it's 0.4, then you provide funds. So if you don't make it to that over half a unit, so I mean, that's, that's, that's an interesting way to do that. I'd, I'd have to think about that with Chris on how you would, how you would structure that verbally or in a zoning bylaw. And I'd also have to investigate whether, whether that's legal. There's certain state laws, you know, that talk about, you know, extracting, you know, payment in lieu of. So, but it's an interesting concept. And so those would be the two things I'd have to think about and talk to Chris about.
Elizabeth, I'd love to know more about that possibility. I believe we've got that, that fund now that exists there. We don't have the mechanism within the zoning bylaw to require funding of it, but we've seen this in other instances where there's the, it artificially pushes down the number of units and projects or, you know, it would be great to investigate that more. I think it's a great suggestion.
I'll talk to our chief housing planner to see, to get her thoughts and see if she's seen how this could be structured and maybe that would be something that we could include here. Thank you.
We had, just for reference, we had a similar situation with Black Birch where the developer said, you know, I'll give you a unit for a million dollars. I don't care which the town wants, but it's the same sort of situation where you can. But thank you for following up on that and investigating, appreciate it.
Thank you. I saw another hand up, Ms. Felshen.
Sue Felshen, 19 Sunnyside Lane. I have a couple of comments. First, I'd like to follow up on Mr. Bader's excellent suggestion. It would simplify matters if the developer has to provide 20% affordable period. In the past, we have always said that we round up in order to provide affordable units. But if the fractional unit could instead be paid into the new fund that we have, that would, on the one hand, get us fewer units because it wouldn't round up, but on the other hand, would get us more because people would be more willing to buy, to build more units. I'd like to further suggest that although the fractional unit can go into the fund, we would allow affordable units to be moved around within a certain distance, like within the zoning district, if it's small enough, but that we not allow somebody to fund an affordable unit, say, in a completely different location in town because that would be a way to exile affordable housing into inconvenient spaces. But because, as was pointed out earlier, some of the lot sizes are small and inconvenient, being able to move units with somebody else's agreement from one lot to another could add extra flexibility. And that brings me to my second comment, which is there was some discussion earlier of what to do about some of the lots that are very small and where certain requirements could be very difficult. I just want to make sure that whatever the town proceeds with, we don't get ourselves into a situation where it is to the advantage of a developer to split up a lot into two lots in order to fulfill requirements because the new lots would be underneath the required size for the more strict requirements. Thank you.
And Kristen, so to follow up on Sue's comment, part of the, the Thoreau, Thoreau Depot. Let me see, so for. Hang on one second, sorry. So for the, currently on, in the Thoreau Depot Business District and actually in all of the village and business districts, there is no minimum lot size, frontage requirements, setbacks, other than for some of them, front yard. So that's definitely something to, to think about. But I can't see, you know, for a developer to go through the process to, you know, to divide up a lot to, you know, get out of the open space, you know, requirement. Again, that would make it more challenging for them from a development perspective and a management perspective. So, but it's something to consider.
I would just note that the, you know, quote unquote, getting out of the open space requirement, it would, it's at the prerogative of the, the planning boards. So, because it would be through a special permit. So if it seemed like they were doing it just for that sake of getting out of the requirement, then they could be denied the special permit to reduce the, the open space. So I think that's, I think it's a good thing to be aware of, but I don't envision that in this area being, being much of an issue. You know, as it relates to the affordability, you know, we could just keep it at the 20% and not try to lower it. I will just say that, you know, I did speak to our, my colleagues in the housing department and they felt like this 20% might just, it's probably or could likely be hindering in this area just based upon, you know, their pretty extensive experience, which mostly focuses on actually writing inclusionary zoning. So that was kind of, to me, a little bit of a red, of a worrisome when I saw that. And I believe, as far as I know, there have not been any developments that have been come in that have been built with the 20% within town. I'm not sure that you, that were, that's what I believe was said last time, or some previous meeting. So there's also just sort of the on-the-ground evidence that maybe it's not working.
Well, I don't see any other hands-ups. Thank you for those good suggestions. If there are no other comments from the planning board, we will be meeting again with you. When, Chris, do we have a date on the calendar yet or is it in November or December?
We're, I think we were planning on December, Elizabeth, I can't recall off the top of my head.
I think it's December 8.
Okay, so we'll be talking again in December 8 and we'll have those specific topics that we'll narrow in on. And our goal will be to kind of identify the wording in the, in the bylaw that we would like to see for those topics.
So for the next one, we'll be focusing on the dimensional standards and the design guidelines. So I think it'll be sort of similar today where we really want to, we'll provide you both the language, but we also want the feedback on the concept itself. So, you know, is the height right, not just where it is in the bylaw?
Yep.
So I want to, you know, make sure that, you know, like, Chris, you feel like you have what, what you need to move forward? Because I, I don't think, I don't feel that there's been an actual consensus on, you know, I will look further into the affordability requirement, but then, you know, whether there's a, you know, a consensus on, you know, the, the open space, allowing, you know, some type of waiver provision or having it be 15% and part of it being a public. So those three topics, I think, to be able to kind of like move, keep moving this along. So those three topics, I think, to be able to, to kind of like move, keep moving this along, you know, the board actually has to come to some consensus on that. Which I know affordability won't be tonight. We'll look into that sliding scale example, but I don't, I don't know if it's a straw poll on those three topics, or, or the remaining two topics, or what, what do you feel like you need to move forward?
Well, I guess I was, since I haven't heard any no's on anything, I guess I'm taking that as an affirmation, but perhaps I'm being too optimistic on that. So, yeah, I mean, if there is, if one option would be if, if, you know, the planning board wants to sort of mull it over a little bit longer, and, and that could be at the next meeting, I could, you know, we could touch upon that first to see if there's any, without getting into a maybe a major discussion, just to see if there's any changes. Or if, on each of those, if, if the board feels comfortable to, to kind of move forward, and that's what we'll, that doesn't mean it can't change later as we get more feedback from the public, but if, if these other, these areas, the open space in particular, I haven't heard anything in terms of just allowing for the, the single use buildings as part of a project. I didn't hear any negatives on that, so I guess I'll just ask, is there any, any concerns about that aspect?
Not, not that, that we can see at this point. I want to make sure that, you know, we, we don't send you down too far a road without giving you guidance. I don't want to make you turn around somewhere because we didn't give you, as Elizabeth said, enough direction and, and support and agreement at, at certain stages. So, although you say, yes, we can change it later in terms of efficacy and of your work, we want to make sure that you're able to, you know, continue down this road. So, so good question. So if we don't have any questions at this point, it sounds like with that first part, you know, Chris would kind of continue down that road. So the next time we see it, it would, anything about that part, it would have been with this concept in mind and kind of with our blessings so far. The affordability, we'll talk about, go ahead, Fern.
Kristen, so, so, so Chris, you're, you're looking for some informal feedback on this idea of a, of a 15% lot area, open space set aside, as opposed to two, two, 2X gross floor area, right? And then the second piece, can, can you just clarify for that again?
Elizabeth, do you want to share that slide again, or who we're sharing with the, with the three concepts, please?
And, and, and I would say, you know, as informal feedback, I think that change from 2X GFA to, to 15% lot area is, it's, makes a huge amount of sense. Guess I didn't realize that 2X GFA was the current requirement, and that doesn't seem compatible with a, with a business district, a town center in any, in any way. And I think that that would be a really good change. I don't know if other board members have, have feedback on that.
I, I agree, it would be a, a change in the right direction.
And so, and so the first, the, the first line, that, the, the, the idea is that within a lot, within a single lot, you could have multiple buildings, some of which are single use.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and again, that, in deep lots, I, I, again, when I've seen this done in other situations, that, that's fairly typical.
Yeah, I mean, in, in my opinion, just, just throwing it out there, I think that the idea is to lend uses, so you have different traffic patterns throughout the day of, of residential users, commercial users, and the like. You, you, you have a more vibrant, you know, 18-hour neighborhood, and whether it's in a single building or in immediately adjacent buildings, I don't think it makes a tremendous difference. And, and when you have these deep lots, I could imagine, from a financial perspective, it makes a lot more sense to have a dedicated residential building that's got, you know, residential style entrances, elevators, that kind of thing. Whereas you might, might make a lot, a lot of sense to have a, I don't know, let's say a building with a health club in it, where you might not want to have it immediately adjacent to an apartment, apartment unit. So I think it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
And I mean, this is, this is the kind of in, information or input that I would, was hoping to hear from property owners. But I, it doesn't seem like we're, we're getting much from, from them, any input.
So Kristen, I know Sir Atias had his hand up. He is a property owner on Thorough Street.
Thank you. I, I see it now. Could you unmute him, please?
Hi, folks. How are you? So, so just processing, you know, just thinking about the lot sizes on Thorough Street specifically. When you think about combining, and I'm a proponent, of course, of affordable housing, so I'm not opposed to that in any way, shape, or form, but as you look at these tighter lots, you know, specifically, and again, I don't know these, these landowners, I don't know them personally. But you look at the Priest Cleaning Building, or some of these other buildings, it's going to be really difficult, including my own, to make a case for the contribution to community, which is, I think we're all looking for the, for this business district to evolve. And then to, to place on it, you know, I don't know how you do a parking requirement. I don't know how you do, you know, I think you have to minimize a lot of that specifically to, to these smaller lots. I think there has to be some given take there in order to just make it, incentivize the, the landowner to actually develop it and turn it into another wonderful part of town. And I, I like the idea of separating sort of districts clearly. Severy Road is radically different than the way the Thorough Street zone feels and what it could potentially be. So I just wanted to offer that, that feedback, that, that I think that there does need to be probably some, some forgiveness or leniency or, or something, as it relates to some of these tighter lots, especially if we're going to go multi-story. That's, that's all I have to contribute, but I really appreciate everybody's work on this, and it seems like it's a lot of work, so thank you.
Sir, if I could ask for clarification, are you talking about flexibility presumably through some sort of special permit process specifically on parking, or on the affordable, affordable housing component?
Well, having been, having been through the process a little bit, you know, in order to try to get, you know, another project passed, there's definitely a fulcrum point where it just, you cannot afford to make the contribution and do the development.
Do you think that a sliding scale, like was suggested earlier in this meeting, in, in, in a contribution amount, so you didn't have that stepped threshold, would, would be an assist in that?
You know, again, I would say, I would say, I'm not opposed to that idea. I thought that was a pretty ingenious idea, so I thought that was interesting. But again, as you get into these smaller lots, and you, and you just process how much square foot, you know, what, what you need to do to make the multi-story buildings, I think, I think that they're, the initial idea, I think on these, on these smaller lots, you couldn't get more than five units. I mean, you just literally couldn't do it. You couldn't get, you may not even be able to get four units on some of these smaller lots, even if you went vertical on them. So my concern again is just one related to the affordability to incentivize the landowners to actually contribute long-term to the community. And that balancing act, especially if it's a tighter lot, of how you do that. And obviously, you know, the, 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 Crosby's parcel speaks a lot to what you were talking about, different buildings and such. But some of these others where we want to create a sort of Main Street effect, I think there, there would have to be some, some threshold, like what was originally proposed in comparison to, to trying to squeeze in an affordable unit and, and on, on a lot that's struggling to get to the justification to do the development piece.
Okay.
So I also think that as part of this discussion, there, there needs to be the realization and the understanding, and I want to say the compromise between, you know, not, not every project has to be affordable. That's not the one goal for doing this. There's the other goal, and that's creating, you know, a walkable, vibrant, mixed community where you, you have this business in the day, you have the residents, you know, the, you know, residential units, you know, towards, you know, the evening and, and, you know, the walkability of those residents and, you know, shopping local, because they can just walk to the grocery store and that type of thing. So that's another aspect to, to think about. So, you know, if you have, you know, like, we'll, we'll take, you know, Sir's building, you know, where his real estate office is, you know what? Thorough Street is going to have, you know, a different height limit, obviously, than, you know, like the Crosby's lot. So maybe it's, you go up, you know, one floor, you, you, you might be able to add two units when, you know, when he thinks about having a residential use and, you know, the limited parking and making sure there isn't, you know, competition for those spaces and, you know, two units. Again, it gets into that financial balance of, you know, if, if there is this going to be this, you know, fee that has to be paid, you know, towards affordability. Well, that's not, that's not the only component that we're looking at. So I, I think people need to realize that that's not, that's not the one thing that's most important. It's all of these things working together to make a vibrant village.
And I will check again with, with my colleagues who are sort of the experts as it comes to affordability, but, you know, again, just based upon, you know, my work with them, I think for the smaller, smaller projects, just to echo what Elizabeth was saying, I think it's going to be very difficult, whether it's a contribution or actually promoting a unit to actually have affordable units on, on very small projects. So I do think, you know, that was the, the whole reason for changing, making a change to that was, was to actually hopefully incentivize, actually allowing what right now might be a hindrance.
Yeah, I mean, Chris, if there's, I mean, I can appreciate, especially on a, let's say you have a three-unit building that's multi-story with ground floor retail, ADA requirements and the like are, are put in such, you know, sort of a threshold of added cost that maybe there's a break-even point where you can start talking about affordability in, in terms of scale, right? And I'd be curious to know where that, where that is. Is it, 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 can you start to find room for affordability at four units, at five units, or, you know, where does that happen? It would, it would be helpful to know.
I mean, is that a cost per square foot issue that, that we, that Chris and his department might have access to data like that? Is that what you're thinking?
No, I mean, just more generally, if you're building a hundred-unit building, right? And you, you, you've got, you're putting in elevators as required by ADA, or you're putting in different things like that, that, that cost is shared a lot across a large number of units. With a four-unit building on a, on a small lot, maybe you're even talking, I mean, it's been a bad hypothetical, but some, some, some stack or structured parking and, and, and an elevator that's serving two units or three units, or things like that that may be required by different, like I said, an ADA requirement or something like that, then your, your some costs don't scale very well at all at that, that level. So then adding on an affordability requirement makes the whole project not feasible, and you, and you're left with a single-story under, underutilized building. Maybe there's a break, there's a point where those projects start looking feasible when you're talking about spreading those, those other external costs across six units or 10 units, or whatever it may be. I imagine cities like Somerville probably have a lot of experience in, you know, what, what you can require into, or Cambridge, and, and for small lot development.
Yeah. And the, the complexity to this issue is the fact that it actually is going to change so much by each municipality, because the rents that you're getting is going to change from Concord versus next place, the costs change a little bit. There's, you know, for an individual developer, does he already own the land, or is it somebody who's coming in and buying the land? There, there's a lot, a whole host of these costs that it's hard to find a single kind of definitive answer, but I think that what we can do is find sort of the general rules of thumb of like what makes sense, and a lot of that might be based upon precedent of what we're seeing in other places. So I will, I'll take that as part of one of my to-dos and, and bring that back to, to kind of refine what I had presented, what I, you know, proposed here as something that now has been tested to, and, and discussed with the housing folks, and potentially a developer or two that I can speak to.
Thanks. So, any, any other comments before, any hesitations, any requests for additional information before kind of Chris does his, his next iteration and brings the next part before us in December?
Maybe specifically, does anybody have any objection to the concept of a 15% lot area with a option with a special permit to go below that for open space? Or this idea of single-use buildings within a multi-use lot? Okay.
Saying, saying no objection. Thank you for continuing to move this forward and bring things in, in front of us. And I do hope that we continue to get input from developers and, and and landowners, so we can make sure that if we, if we zone it, they will come.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Chris. We will, we'll see you soon.
I bet.
So the next item on our agenda, I believe that I opened the public meeting.
Public hearing.
Reopened the public hearing, and then I think we're, we're looking for two motions, as you saw from Elizabeth's information about this. Elizabeth, thank you for meeting with the applicant and his engineer to discuss the issues. I think that the goal really was to make sure it was clear what the board would need to be able to evaluate so that we could make our decision. So I think we need two motions. One is to continue the, the public hearing to 7:30 PM on November 10, and then we need another motion to accept the time extension for the board to file its decision.
That can be done in one motion.
Oh, fabulous.
So Kristen, I'd, I'd make a motion that we move to continue the public hearing for the, the application of Sims Development and Permitting LLC for 16 lot subdivision of Land at 11B, 146B, and 1442 Main Street, and Wenton Highland Street to 7:30 PM on November 10, and accept the time extension for the board to file its decision with the town clerk to November 30.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Linda, second. Mr. Seah.
Yes.
Ms. Orbital. Sorry, I lost.
Yeah.
Mr. Flint?
Yes.
Mr. Bosdat?
I'm staying.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And this is Ms. Ferguson, yes. All right. So we will, we will look forward to seeing the next information before, hopefully well before the meeting on the 10. So now we have a few things. One, a very exciting discussion about the Massachusetts Model Flood Plane Bylaw. I'm just assuming it's, it's exciting because everything these days to do with catastrophes is exciting.
Okay, so what I can tell you is I will share my screen again. I'm getting better at this. So the, the state working with FEMA has come out with a new model flood plane bylaw, and as in my agenda memo states, given towns a directive that basically you, you must update your flood plane bylaw if you want to maintain your status in the National Flood Insurance Program. You don't have to drop everything and immediately do it, but the next time you have the appropriate opportunity, you should be doing it, which a month ago, the board, I brought this to the board's attention, and, you know, there's no way you can sit there and draft a bylaw amendment in two months to get the warrant. So since that time, the select board has set the 2021 Annual Town Meeting for Sunday, June 13, which puts the warrant opening sometime in February, middle of February, late February, and closing sometime middle or late of March. So that gives us more than enough time to, you know, draft amendments to the flood plane bylaw. So just very quickly, I'll go through and tell you like some of the, some of the things we'll be looking at. Like currently, the, the flood plane bylaw under the purpose only talks about maintaining, you know, quality and the level of groundwater. maintaining, you know, quality and level of groundwater to protect persons and property and protect against unsuitable use use or development in areas. So it doesn't, the purpose doesn't include some of these other items, you know, avoid the loss of utility service, eliminate costs associated with the response and cleanup. So it'll be pulling out some things and not not everything in this model bylaw has, you know, is going to have to be included because it may be elsewhere in the zoning bylaw. And an example of, so this section right here just deals with, you know, what is our flood plain district? And we have a very, very comprehensive paragraph already that I, so I don't think we need to amend this because it it goes through and it lists the current firm maps. It lists the, you know, the updates and all of that. So I don't, I don't think this section will have to be amended. Currently, the bylaw doesn't have, you know, this this section about, you know, the regulations taking precedence over, you know, other conflicting laws. We don't have a disclaimer of liability. The zoning bylaw already has a severability section. It's at the very end, so that, you know, that's not something we have to do. In the bylaw, it doesn't designate a community floodplain administrator. So that would be something that has to be added. And so it it really is going through and, you know, just pulling out the things we need and inserting them, you know, into the bylaw. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. And then the only other item that I can think that it it's not part of the the state's model floodplain bylaw, but it is something that I think needs to be incorporated. So since the 70s, the town, whenever a special permit has application has been filed for work in the floodplain. Since that time, the town has required one to one and a half percent compensatory storage. So if somebody wants to, you know, fill in, you know, you know, fill in a, you know, 100 square feet of floodplain, they have to provide one and a half times that in compensatory storage somewhere else. So for for decades, the town of Concord has actually been, I'm going to say more forward thinking and in providing for floodplain storage because of that requirement. But it's not specifically in the zoning bylaw. So I think this will be a great opportunity to put that language into the zoning bylaw so it's very clear, you know, to anybody that that's that's the requirement.
And thank you. And how does this fit in your, you know, schedule of priorities for being able to do this and have us review it in in time for the warrant?
This isn't a very difficult task because, you know, the document the state sent is, you know, get it in a word document, you can cut and paste and compare things. So it's, you know, it's not a very difficult bylaw amendment. The establishing the new language regarding the, you know, compensatory storage, that will take, you know, a little bit more coordination between myself, the Natural Resources Director and the Town Engineer.
Well, that's good. I'm glad we have something to offer for the for next year's town meeting so far. And I think that'll be, I think that'll be a benefit.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's a, it's a difficult, you know, warrant article. It's, you know, if the town wants to stay in the national, you know,
Right.
you know, flood insurance program.
Exactly.
Got to make these changes.
And any questions or comments from board members? Yep, okay, so we're we're all for you kind of doing all that work. Thank you very much. And bringing it back in front of us. So, you know, that's kind of the the lead in, obviously, to one of the big things that that the board does in addition to kind of our our daily duties or weekly, monthly duties is, you know, make any recommendations for amendments to the bylaws. And and we do that at that town meeting. And then right now they require a two thirds vote of the town to pass. So what we're doing now is kind of lining up what it is that we want to work on so that we have plenty of time to talk amongst ourselves, research, get whatever information we need to, and then get input from the public as well before we, you know, draft those amendments and and bring them to the floor of town meeting or actually put them in the in the warrant, I should say. So to do that, we wanted to be guided by the Long Range Plan in which, and everybody, you know, probably has the copy or they, you know, obviously it's it's online, which is kind of the the nice way to search. And and in the back of that was that implementation chart that was a spreadsheet of, you know, all right, here are the goals and here are the actions, and then here are the groups responsible for it. And for all the people who have worked on the Long Range Plan or have have looked at it, you'll notice that they really tried to to make it less siloed and and make sure that when changes were made, they were made kind of looking at a at a broader through a broader lens and even with multiple departments working together so that we kind of make the best changes possible. So what what we did and Elizabeth, I don't know if you want to share your screen or I can. Matt Johnson, before he left, had kind of boiled down the, you know, 50 or so actions under each of the goals that had planning board as as one of the bodies of of in charge of this. And it wasn't always just the planning board was in in charge of this action. But there was definitely kind of a number of of themes. And obviously, there was quite a few goals underneath each of the, you know, seven or so areas, including land use and so forth and so on. And then they, and then they all fell. And then there was action. So Matt kind of summarized it to me, and especially if you haven't been reading a lot of the Long Range Plan, I needed some more context for where these came from. So I made another tab to say, okay, when it says, you know, green neighborhood zoning, you know, what what was the goal that that was supporting and what was the specific action item that had been summarized here? So on the next tab, Elizabeth has kind of my notes about where it came from. So you'll see there was there is these sections, cultural or historic resources, economic vitality, housing, land use. There was about seven sections in the in the first column there. And then within each of those, there were these goals. And there were action items for all of us under every goal, under every section. But we tried to, you know, call out the ones that that did say planning board or sometimes planning division and then underneath the goals. And so the other thing is that for many of the items, many of the actions, the Long Range Plan had put timing near, medium or long term. Near term, they specified as zero to one years. Medium term was two to five years and long term was more than six years. There was not a lot of long term. So there was more near and and medium. And so it really is up to kind of the planning board to at least prioritize and say, this is, this is where we're going to support the Long Range Plan. And, you know, these are the actions that we want to take along the way based on, you know, our our priority to support these goals and also kind of, you know, the the charge of the planning board. So so there are quite a few. And I think we want to look at what would be most meaningful to us in the in our near term. So are there any of these actions that we can take that would affect zoning bylaws that we would actually recommend changing at the next town meeting? And we'd want to kind of look at those and start working on those or or one right away. And I think we want to also look at it in terms of what are we working toward so that we want to make changes over the next, you know, two and three years? And so that we're thinking and moving towards those. And so an example would be, and we haven't talked about this at all, so I'm thinking more of like a longer term example would be form-based code. You know, since I joined the board, you know, a few years ago, I had heard that term a lot. We've talked about it a lot. Is it the kind of thing that we want to say, we want to move toward that in, you know, three years or by 2025? And to do that, we should be doing these things along the way. So that's what I mean by thinking about kind of a longer range plan. And then, you know, in the meantime, say, you know, here is either low hanging fruit or here is kind of what we're really hearing, you know, public comment about what we're really, we're really hearing that we need to make immediate, more immediate changes and what we can do about that. So on the chart that Elizabeth has, you know, some of these items, we've definitely have started already. There's references to more affordable housing and to family housing and things like that. So some of the items I kind of marked in green thing that we we had done that amend the two family or additional dwelling unit bylaw and then allow accessory dwelling units to be rented, even if they had not been, you know, so so some of these things we've already worked on. And then some of the items, I would imagine Elizabeth and the planning division is actually kind of working out at a bigger picture. So when we start talking about things, I would imagine Elizabeth will kind of rein us in if we're starting down a path that that they're already working at a higher level or working with other departments. So we can go back to Matt's, the the tab that Matt had, because it's just a little easier to read and get kind of the pulse from the group about from our our board about which of these items do we want to prioritize and and kind of start working on right away? And if we need to kind of cross reference back to this table here, we can, we can do that. But I don't know if anybody has recently looked at the Long Range Plan? And if anything, kind of bubbled to the surface for people? And yeah, so Elizabeth still needs to kind of comb through this. If if there's already stuff that is has happened or going on that I didn't flag, she's going to do that. And so, for example, one of them has to do with the demolition delay bylaw. And I believe that I'd heard that the Historic District Commission is going to propose an amendment to that bylaw at the next town meeting. They're working toward that. So.
What I can say is, yes, the Historical Commission is drafting a warrant article to update the demolition review bylaw. And also they are in discussion with residents in a neighborhood about establishing a a new historic district. So those are, you know, currently, those are also currently underway.
Okay.
I don't know if you want me to.
Yeah, so mark, maybe mark them with some sort of colors. And I know we're not going to try to attack all of these things anyway. And I think it's going to be important to, you know, have a focus on what we want to work on this year. But I don't want to lose sight of kind of the the bigger picture. I want to make sure that anything that we're working on, you know, this year is going to be so that additional items can be built on it in 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 coming years as we as we move toward this this vision, this long range plan though. So would folks like to take a look at the that condensed list that Matt made and and try to weigh in on? We can kind of go around and ask everybody what what their feedback is, if they think it's a a low, medium or high priority. So you'll see he kind of summarized about 20 initiatives, you know, or actions. And and then we can kind of do that low, medium or high priority and see if we start to see any kind of trends here and and see if there's any any high priority ones that that come to the top. So you are going to need to unmute yourselves so that you can have this discussion so we can hear from people. And we'll just start at the top of the list. We've got, we've got time. We want to hear from people if there are questions about what is meant by, you know, any of these. We'll we'll either flip over to the next sheet or you can flip open your your long range plan there, so. So the first one is mixed use, increased density near village centers. And I feel like that's something that we've been working on for a while and continue to work on. The question is, are we, is there additional work to be done before this town meeting?
I mean, not really related to mixed use, I guess, but we we've already put together the two family change and everything. So that's something that sort of goes to the density. The desire for some greater density. Town centers or around the transportation homes. So I kind of feel like we we've got one thing going for that already.
And that's when we're going to put that on. We're, that's for this year's town meeting, next year's town meeting.
So the question is if they should go in this year's town meeting or?
I mean, I think that's the plan for the two family. Right, the two family plan is that's going on 2021. We just deferred it from last meeting. So is there any any other initiatives that we would propose to look into that would support this this action increasing density near village centers? I mean, we are working towards the thorough business district changes. We're doing, we're proposing the two family. So it's it's a high priority. It's something we've been working on. It's certainly something that goes all through the long range plans. But Elizabeth, do you see, is there anything else we could be doing to support this?
As a high priority being, well, no, we're we're not saying to reference the Long Range Plan, it's, what is it, near, medium?
Yeah, I mean, you could do, you could do a near term, medium term or long. And this would be, this would be near. But I'm just thinking in terms of, do we understand what it is that we would do to to support that action that we're not already doing?
Well, part of it is, it's, you know, it's kind of not what you're already doing, it's your capacity to be able to do more. So I I think if you have near term, we have, you know, for annual town meeting, we have the, you know, two family and then the thorough business district, you know, fall of 2021. So is is there something else that the, as far as, so that's that's enough for near term? So so mid, you know, you know, midterm? Is, you know, is there something that the board wants to now start thinking about that? You know, you're going to start thinking about for annual town meeting 2022? So I basically what you, you know, what you're doing is kind of creating this roadmap for the board now. The board in one, two, three, and then, you know, beyond that, you know, for some of the members, you know, five years from now.
And for example, one of the the actions is increase allowable density in certain locations by allowing multifamily houses, tiny houses or townhouses. You know, so is that something that we want to, you know, look into for down the road? Does that tiny houses, townhouses make a difference? I'm not sure exactly why they called them out specifically, so in the plan.
Well, the ADU kind of accomplished that, right?
You have tiny house?
I I would agree, the changes that the board made to the additional dwelling unit.
I I I think so too. I mean, I think that's what I was saying, I can't think of something else that we're missing, but I want to make sure that we're thinking a little bit out in the future as well.
Oh, I know. And also it's, you know, terminology, you know, for, for a lot of places around the country. You know, a, a tiny house is, you know, kind of akin to, you know, a mobile home. But, you know, you can, you can bring it in, you can, you know, take this little tiny house that's, you know, made and plop it down. You know, on a lot. That's really not financially feasible in Concord, given the cost of land. So, you know, if, if somebody is purchasing, you know, an undeveloped lot for
Right.
$400,000. And, and it's vacant, you, you could, you could bring in a tiny house and put it on a permanent foundation. You, you can already do that.
Okay.
So I think the changes that the board made to the additional dwelling unit kind of speaks more to the questions that we've got in, got, have got, received in the planning division office is, you know, I have my house, my, you know, my adult children need to move back in, which is fine, but I don't want them in my house. Can I put a tiny house in the backyard?
Right.
So I, I think the board has, has accomplished that. And we've already seen, had, I think there's already been two additional dwelling units.
Oh, yeah?
That have been proposed, so.
That's exciting. Okay, let's, if, any, any other comments? I agree. I think we've, we've, for the last few years, I think we've been working towards that. The, another one is neighborhood conservation districts. And that kind of came up towards the tail end of last year. And I, but I imagine it's come up in the past. What are people's thoughts on this? I'm trying to gauge, do you think this should be a near-term, next year or so priority? Or a medium-term or a long-term and, and why? So I'd love to hear from people about this.
Can you just remind us, Elizabeth, like, was this idea or concept taken from a, a different town? I just can't remember. Yeah, how, how, I know there was like one particular neighborhood that was thinking about doing this in Concord.
Yes, it was something that somebody found from, you know, a different community. And, and, and part of this again is just terminology, you know, whether you have, you know, an open space residential design, you know, or open space residential district or neighborhood conservation district or what the PRD bylaw, you know, originally intended to do. So they're all kind of somewhat similar. But to your question, Hallie, it was the Jenny Dugan neighborhood that was looking into a neighborhood conservation district. But, you know, again, you're talking about that, you know, a zoning, you know, a zoning threshold. And so I think that neighborhood is looking at other methods for preservation of the neighborhood.
And, yeah, and that's the thing. It looks like there's, there's two related goals to this. So one was to enhance regulatory tools to protect and preserve historical character and cultural resources. And then there was also to discourage the demolish, demolition of smaller houses and their replacement with larger, more expensive residences. So this idea of neighborhood conservation districts was intended to, you know, address a couple of those goals within the, within the both the housing and the cultural, historic and cultural preservation. So that's kind of where it came from. So what, what are people's thoughts on, is this something that the board should work on in the near-term? Medium-term or long-term?
I think it's the medium-term thing. That's how I feel about it.
Next two to five years? Other folks? Thanks, Alan.
I guess, um, hard to take it kind of in isolation when it seems like some of these other ones might be trying to achieve the same goal. But I don't know that for sure, but I'm just taking a guess here. So, I mean, I think like, it seems like a goal in general continues to be, how do we stop the, you know, teardown and McMansionization? So, like, I don't feel like I know, feel strongly yet about like, which one of these actions might achieve that goal. But like, I guess I just wanted to be, to understand, is that still like an overarching goal? That we feel like still needs to be addressed sooner rather than later.
So Elizabeth, can you go to the next tab and where that, where, where that goal is? So this was from the long-range plan and obviously it had input from, you know, all of the departments and everything. And so, and under housing, which is like 4.3 there. You know, obviously one big goal is, or, you know, one big goal is to discourage the demolition of smaller homes and replace, and their replacement larger, more expensive. And then there was two actions that specifically called out. It's not to say that we couldn't come up with another action that would support that goal as well. And so I think that, I think that's something that we need to consider. So I, I think that's what we hear from, from the public all the time when they weigh in is, is that's a big concern. And so, you know, here are two actions that the long-range planning group thought might address this. One is identify and adopt best zoning practices to encourage the preservation of existing smaller homes. And that would obviously leave it up to the planning board and planning division to identify what those zoning practices would be. And, and I don't, I don't know how, how that happens, Elizabeth, is that, you know, that you and, and go and do some research about how other towns have addressed this and they kind of bring that back to us?
Well, I mean, Concord's pretty, pretty much on the forefront of moving forward and trying to address this issue. And, and has already done a lot. It's, you know, you have, you're going to, and I, to sidetrack one, I will expect everybody to do the doodle poll by tomorrow on the meeting with the planning board and the board of appeals. Because one of those other, you know, action items that you already discussed and said you wanted to move forward with is talking with the board of appeals about the floor area ratio by law and, and whether it's, you know, whether it's doing its job and whether that needs to be amended to help address that issue of tear downs and, you know, creating McMansions. So, and then, you know, the board just amended the additional dwelling unit, which, again, that helps people offset the cost of, you know, staying in their homes, staying in, you provide them, you know, income if they do, you know, build a little additional dwelling unit that they can rent. So the, you know, the board has already started taking all these different steps. I think if there's, you know, specific things that you want to, you know, look into, like the neighborhood conservation district, there's, you know, there's lots of different publications of, you know, about what, you know, that does and, and, you know, how it works. And, you know, not, not everything in, you know, the envisioned Concord plan needs to be done. And that's what we saw with the previous plan. You know, I think there were, you know, 100 and, let's say, 165 actions identified in that plan. And over, you know, the 10 years of that plan, you know, things change and a lot of those actions, you know, just basically fall off the list because they're not applicable anymore. And so, or, you know, things were taken off the list because, excuse me, it's, it, it's, it's a concept that doesn't seem to, to work well within, you know, this community. So, you know, I really, I really think it's, you know, for these new things, it's, you know, educating, you know, learning about them and, and whether it's something that fits with this community. Not, you know, not every type of zoning option out there is suitable for every community.
Yeah, I guess, I, I feel, I get what you're saying. I think, just been thinking about like making a decision specifically about like a neighborhood conservation district and like whether that should be near or medium-term, like that at least seems very specific to me versus like number one here, which is like identify and adopt best zoning practices, which, like a best zoning practice might be neighborhood conservation districts. I don't know. But like, that's a bit more broad, I guess. But we've at least, it looks like identified that as near-term there.
Oh, on this list? Sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that's, anything I have there was kind of from what they identified in the implementation chart. But obviously, it's, it's really up to us to, you know, see how it fits within kind of what we're seeing as, as priorities and also in our near future, hopefully.
I guess I have a question. That's quite understanding. It's, it's not the district. And as a ca-
I'm sorry, Alan, you're-
Character of the district or, I mean, I, I understand. My connection is not good for some reason, right? Yeah.
Time to kick the rest of the family off the wifi.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I know. I guess. How are we defining neighborhoods into neighborhood conservation district? Because joining with the historic preservation, correct, by, by the date, basically. So it's difficult to define neighborhood to to discourage small house demolition. I think that, that's the thing that I'm not quite understanding. How, how, how is this, are, are there any precedents on this or?
On how a neighborhood-
I don't know. I think. Yeah, can discourage, can preserve existing smaller homes, basically. Unless historic or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, again, I, I mean, I know of, you know, about neighborhood conservation districts. I'm, I'm definitely not well-versed on, you know, the mechanics of it and how it would work for Concord. You know, but for, you know, for Concord, you know, a neighborhood, you know, to define a neighborhood, you know, definitely may be easier around the villages and, you know, a couple of, you know, different, you know, key subdivisions. But it'd be, you know, once, once you got a couple of miles out of the village centers, it, it would be very, you know, it would be very difficult to define a, a neighborhood, so.
And Alan, I think that's a great point. I mean, we got to keep kind of the goal in mind. These are actions that were suggested that would support the goal, but we have to, I think, evaluate, is that the, the best action we can take at this point or in the near future that would really support that goal? And, and I think, I think maybe by making this more, not a near-term goal, but more of a medium-term goal, maybe there's more time to investigate, well, what would that really do? You know, has anybody implemented the neighborhood conservation districts? And then what was the result? You know, did they see fewer demolitions? Did they see, you know, different types of, of construction as a result? I, I think that's a, a good, a good way to think about it. I don't know if other people have ideas? You know, related to that, this green neighborhood zoning. And so I, I mean, I think the big things, the big themes that kind of come before the planning board and that we've kind of been working on are, you know, sustainable housing, which often seems to mean, you know, smaller and, and, you know, less building materials with less teardowns, things like that. But then also sustainable in terms of, you know, energy usage. And so those are kind of the, the themes that, that I see kind of throughout some of these here. And then we'll see, you know, ecosystem preservation, green infrastructure, even the tree preservation bylaws. I think those types of things are coming up because we are really trying to do more with, you know, the bigger picture goals for, for Concord's energy use and sustainability as well. So if you, if we were looking at the green neighborhood district, what was, what was meant by that was, what was that one? Oh, so that was intended to support similar things. Enhance regulatory tools to protect and preserve historical character and cultural resources. Support green neighborhood zoning or cluster zoning in coordination with the goals for housing for mitigation of agricultural impacts on neighboring landscapes. You know, and so, and related to that, preserve Concord's current combination of land uses by identifying regulatory tools that preserve and restore important ecosystems, increase use of green infrastructure. So, you know, we've got kind of these, these goals about, you know, preserving open space overall. And what can we, what can we do with that that also? You know, so I'm not even sure what green neighborhood zoning is, is meant by this.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know what is meant by it. And I, as, as we saw with, you know, the proposal to, you know, restrict any, you know, expansion of fossil fuels, when, when you, when you get into, zoning isn't the right place for everything, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure how to deal with that one.
Yeah, so when we're looking at this list, that's why I wanted to be able to refer back to the goal that it was trying to support. And, you know, so for example, when we were looking at the PRD and what we, what we did last year and tried, the last town meeting and tried to make, you know, sustainability more important. I think those are types of things that, that do support the, the larger goal in, in a more meaningful way from the planning board's perspective. But I mean, if other people have ideas about green neighborhood zoning, as specified in that long-range plan, please speak up or, you know, other things that might be related to that type of, of support for those goals.
I mean, I'm certainly interested in it. I, yeah, I just feel like I need to do some more research of my own to like, understand what exactly that means.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm even hesitant to put a priority on it since we can't really define it. And we could put, you know, medium or long, investigate. And I have a feeling that we will kind of combine what we work on under, under larger umbrellas, I, I hope, rather than all of these individual actions. But let's, let's see. You know, so I, Elizabeth, I know you did the expand the tree by law protections. And I think that's, I think that's important because that was on our goals. That has come up with, I think, subdivisions and, you know, PRDs and things like that. So, and we are, when are we going to be hearing from the tree warden, was it?
The town's reviewing agent?
Yes.
On December 8th.
Okay. So does everyone agree that, that, I mean, this has, is on our, our list of goals for this year about tree by law protection? Any comments or questions or things that we want to be sure to ask our tree, town's reviewing agent to make sure they bring to the meeting?
So they will be coming with, you know, a, you know, a discussion on, you know, one, their, you know, their opinion on just the effectiveness of the tree by law. And two, you know, areas in the bylaw or the rules and regs where they've run into, you know, whether conflicts or issues or, or things that, you know, just weren't thought about- whether conflicts or issues or things that, you know, just weren't thought about before, but now that we've, you know, done quite a few of these, you know, things that should be thought about as far as amendments to either the bylaw or the rules and regs. So that's what they will be coming on December 8th for.
I think that's going to be helpful. Is that the same day MAPC is coming back? Busy day. Um, so please pipe up if you guys have stuff, otherwise I'm going to kind of keep going down this list. Um, then I might move around a little bit. One of the things we also have on here is study housing, housing stock type and price, which we did at least a year or so ago, have a presentation about that.
Which I'm, I'm, I'm not so convinced why the planning board would take a lead on that.
Yeah.
Anyways.
Okay. Can you, can you just make that note unless others disagree? Yeah. So there was a lot of actions on here that, you know, planning board was mentioned among other, other boards or or departments for sure. And it wasn't necessarily that the planning board had to lead or take up the mantle. So I was trying to figure out how to, how to kind of separate and come out from all this. So. Um, the other one, is the other one on the list here? Let me see. Um, then, then, well, I can wait for that one. So the FAR changes or form based code, again, I feel like we've been talking that for, for quite a while. And that, I think, is intended to address this. This issue of, you know, the mansion nation. So it is the goal that this is associated with is encourage production of small scale affordable health and workforce housing that is sustainable, resilient and consistent with town character. And I do feel like a lot of what we've been doing in the planning board is trying to encourage that and support that goal. So one of them is consider zoning alternatives such as modifying the FAR bylaw and building setback requirements as well as form based codes. So that's one thing, one action that does seem to fall within our purview. And we are going to start by talking with the ZBA. Are there other comments?
Which I'll, you know, I'll kind of defer to Alan on this, but at least in, in Concord's setting, you know, form, form based code could easily work for like Concord Center Business District. But, and maybe some of, you know, some of the neighborhoods and, you know, like resident seed districts, but I don't really see that it being a viable opportunity for, you know, like the homes out on Long Road or you know, other areas of town. I don't, I don't see form based code being something that works in that context. I don't know, Alan, if you agree or disagree with me.
I agree. Sorry, I was saying, yes, I agree with you.
So, you know.
The FER. I was just thinking, sorry about the lack in my. Since we're doing a couple of these items have a lot overlap with what's happening with the Thorough District. The work that's being done there. I don't know if we can have some, some of the work that's being done there influence these to bylaws. So I don't know, that's, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud basically here because I mean, the form based code definitely has a lot to do with that, what's, what's happening. There was another one that I just thought, yeah, so I don't know. So, I mean, there could be some interesting overlap that we can take advantage of, but I don't know, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud here. I don't know how to even.
Well, Elizabeth, what are some steps that we could take to either educate ourselves about form based code? So let's say, let's say that we do want to, and would you consider those two distinct things, FAR change?
Oh, yeah, they are.
So I want to make sure we look at those kind of separately. So FAR changes definitely near term because we want to at least understand, I think it's been several years since, since that bylaw was amended. And so I think this is a good time to evaluate it and see how it changed. But then, you know, separately is this investigation of form based code. But it seems like we would need some sort of interim steps along the way. So what do we need to know or do to, if that was, let's say, a medium term, medium term goal? What steps would we be taking in the near term so that we'd be ready to make a change in the medium term?
Um. There would be a lot of education on the part of the board in even understanding all of the different aspects of form based code. I mean, I, again, it's one of those things I know a little bit about it. I know, you know, what it it's intended to do and, and why and the how, but you know, it's my understanding, it's, it's very, you know, specific and detailed and, you know, getting into, you know, a lot of different elements. I mean, it's.
Yeah. Is it the type of thing that we would try to write a grant for like we did for the Thorough Business District to get, you know, support that way?
Um, yeah. I'm sorry.
To work with a consultant. We need to work with a consultant. Yeah, for a form based code.
Yeah, I mean, there may be an opportunity through MAPC to, to apply for some, you know, local technical assistance to, to look at that. But, I mean, you would, where it's appropriate, you know, where you think about, it's like West Concord Village would be, you know, the ideal place to, to look at the feasibility of form based code for the village district.
So maybe that's, that's a good goal. So we've always talked about it as form based code, as this is kind of lump sum, but we've never really said what we wanted to do with it. And I think because thinking about it in terms of community wide was, town wide was so daunting. We just keep mentioning it every year, but we don't really do anything. So maybe if there's that specific goal of, you know, piloting form based code in, you know, the West Concord Village by 2025, then we said, okay, this is what we would need to do to get there.
Yeah. So what you would, what you could probably do is near term, you know, educate yourself and the West Concord Advisory Committee on, you know, what form based code is and have the discussion of basically taking the West Concord Design Guidelines and, and morphing that into a form based code. So they're, you know, they're no longer guidelines, they're the requirements. So I think.
Also, FER changes and form based code are completely different things, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Be separate.
Yes, we're gonna, let's separate those into two different rows, please. Any other, any other thoughts on the, you know, the priority of either FAR changes or separately form based codes? You know, how are people on the board looking at those items in terms of what to work on in the next year, what to work on the next two to five years?
My opinion, FAR changes, we can look at it. It's much easier to implement and it's near term, basically. That's how I feel about it because there are, we can see what the impact has been done with the FAR bylaw that we have. And it's much easier to wrap our brains around it. But form based code is much, it's much longer, I think more mid, what is it, near term, midterm?
Medium, yeah.
What's the terminology?
Okay. Any, any other comments, Nathan?
Other than to say the form based code one, yeah, definitely is not a, not a near term.
But, but it just keeps, seems like it keeps getting pushed off. So I feel like once we, once we have some sort of a goal, and I think it's important to talk to the West Concord Advisory Committee and say, you know, how do you feel about this? And can you commit to learning about this with us as well?
On the other hand, I think what Elizabeth said, because as to these guidelines, it might be relatively easy to codify that, basically. It's, it's just another step that needs to become a code, the design guidelines. So I don't know. I mean, I'm going back and forth if it's somewhere between near term and midterm, but midterm.
Alan, I feel like you're just about to say, all you have to do is.
What's that?
I feel like you're just about to say, all you have to do is, which is always, always bad news.
Kristen, can you just go back to what 2.3 is again? Because I just feel like.
Yeah. Yeah, let's look at the, so the second tab is kind of the actual action that they called out and the goal that supports it. So it would have been probably in housing, a little further down. Hold on, let me, I gotta search mine. Basically. Oh, it said, it's under encouraging the production of small scale affordable and workforce housing. Consider zoning alternatives such as modifying the FAR bylaw and building setback requirements and as well as for form based code. So zoning alternatives that would encourage production of small scale affordable and workforce housing. It's kind of the, the bigger picture.
Form based code doesn't do that.
Well, apparently they didn't have that input in the, at the time. For our purposes, I think we should definitely, you know, clarify that.
Yeah, because I mean, I guess I just keep coming back to like, how do you choose what to prioritize? It's like, I get that FAR is, seems relatively easy to tackle, but like, has it, has it been working? I guess that's the outstanding question. And like, if it's not working, then obviously us to focus on that in the near term doesn't mean we're going to accomplish the goal. You know what I mean? Like, do we need something, I guess it's how the form based code isn't, isn't actually meant to address it, but like, whatever the next thing is, it might be harder to do, but like, will it actually accomplish 2.3 if FAR is not, not actually accomplishing 2.3?
And I mean, I think that's the good point. So if you were to say, if you were to start from scratch and say, how could we encourage production of small scale affordable and workforce housing? You know, if we just said, okay, blank slate, how do we do that? That would be hard to come up with new ideas, you know, so here are some that we can try that they, you know, worked on as that group. The other thing to your point is, how do we know when we've accomplished the goal? Like, do we, are we measuring small scale production of affordable and workforce housing? Are we quantifying what small scale means and things like that so that we know, you know, are these changes making difference? And so, you know, vice versa. We talk about all the large houses being built, you know? Do we need to quantify that and say, we've got this many houses with this much square feet? And so we want to have, you know, fewer houses or fewer square feet built? Like, is that something that would help us to set and actually measure goals? Or is that impossible?
I would, I would reiterate something that Elizabeth said earlier, and that's the form based code, if that's, if the goal is to commit the McMansions and, and, you know, provide more small scale housing. I I agree with what Elizabeth said earlier. Form based code probably isn't the right approach for that, maybe, because that is more applicable to the town center areas and things like that, which isn't where, well, I mean, smaller housing maybe in the form, in other forms, but I feel like we've addressed or in the process of addressing that to some extent. But the McMansion aspect is outside of those areas and probably wouldn't be touched by a form based code. So we'd be, we'd be spending all this time educating ourselves on form based code and potentially looking at ways to implement new. You know.
Oh, I, I think.
Sorry. If I'm, if I'm misrepresenting what you were.
No, no, you're, you're definitely, definitely not. These, these two items are two different things and, and they, and they, you know, they're, what they accomplish are completely two different things. So I think having form based code be, you know, a midterm. I think you just, you start with, you know, educating, you know, the planning board and the West Concord Advisory Committee, just because I think West Concord is, you know, is the perfect area to kind of have this discussion. You know, everybody would think, you know, Concord, you know, Concord Center, but that's in a historic district and that throws, you know, this completely different element into it that don't want to, you know, kind of get into. So, so I think it's, you have the conversation with the, you know, West Concord Advisory Committee and they may feel that, you know, what the current West Concord Village and West Concord Business District, the zoning bylaw in conjunction with their design guidelines, you know, is doing a great job. And, you know, the, you know, the, the time expense and effort to go through and adopt a form based code, you know, it, you know, it may not be worth it. So I think for midterm, yeah, you, you know, we're talking about over the next, you know, couple of years. You know, or even in the next year, you know, as far as the education and have the conversation. You know, that can happen. And, and then, as you said, Kristen, you know, yeah, we can look to, you know, applying for, you know, local technical assistance grant. You know, if it seems like, yeah, let's, let's look at the village, West Concord and form based code at that time. So I, I think what you have there is, is, is fine.
All right. So, but I mean, I think we're all seeing kind of those, those same overarching goals, you know, we want smaller, more affordable housing. How do we do that? Because that's, that's been elusive. And then we want, and we want to make sure that our zoning bylaws are doing that. So, yeah, that housing production plan update.
Which the Regional Housing Services Office will begin that sometime, I'm going to say the middle of next year after the 20, the 2020 census information comes out.
Okay. So, I mean, so there's several things that are, you know, similar. So the FAR, the form based code, then the next line you'll see is best practices to preserve existing smaller homes. So we're kind of seeing several actions creep up because there were similar things supporting different goals through, for different different sections of the plan, for sure. The 500 year flood plan, we can put that on the near, near term, right? Now that we're gonna.
The board's already discussed this and I can show you a map of the 100 year flood plan and the 500 year flood plan. And there's, it's, it's not worth it. There's, there's very limited 500 year flood plane in, in the community.
So let's, let's put that. So the good news is, Elizabeth is always saying we have so much work for ourselves. We just, we just. We just, we just took most of these things off. Natural Resource Protection Zoning is similar to what we've been talking about already. It is. Where, where's the one? Okay, so this is related to encourage the renovation of existing single-family homes in all zoning districts and identify the opportunities to create accessory dwelling units within the existing structures in all zoning districts and allow cluster housing development and co-housing in designated areas. And so one of the actions is to adopt Natural Resource Protection Zoning, allowing co-housing and other clustered development. So what do we need to know about that proposed action, Elizabeth?
That, the, the words in that goal and the action items to me don't fit. That, that's not my understanding of what a Natural Resources Protection Zoning has nothing to do with encouraging small houses.
And, and do, do we, does the planning board have anything to do with Natural Resource Protection Zoning? From that?
I don't, I, I don't think the planning board would be on the lead. I think that would be, you know, that would be something. And the same thing with the next item. The Natural Resources Commission is, is very proactive on APRs. I, I believe there's actually a subcommittee that, that actually monitors and, and, you know, deals with APR. So I don't, I don't think that's a planning board item.
Okay. Would you mind making, making those notes also, please? So I mean, in, in general of this kind of subset of list, and as Elizabeth mentioned, there's, you know, hundreds, we, and then the last one is reducing parking requirements. And that one we have talked about in terms of our, you know, sustainability and walkability goals and things like that. And what, what was our plan for this year? Are, are we proposing bringing some changes to town meeting?
On, on reducing the parking requirements? So I think it was last year, MAPC did that parking analysis for the board and they presented that. And then, you know, I don't think the board ever took that back up again as far as wanting to look at changing the, changing.
So in my mind, that's worth looking at. So I think all, what we have ourselves signed up for this year are the Thro Business District for the fall town meeting. And that's not a small one. That's, that's a big one for sure. But then the other thing that we looked at, can you scroll up, Elizabeth? Sorry.
Yeah, so, so, you know, it was in 2019.
Okay.
But so last year, you know, this past town meeting, the board got the parking relief criteria passed.
And so I think what, what we're thinking about is for, you know, each use, there's a parking requirement, right? And so it comes before the planning board if there's a change of use and they need to perhaps ask for relief from parking. And obviously now we have criteria, but you know, are, are those requirements for parking outdated? Or particularly with what we're trying to do in terms of having fewer cars on the road, hopefully having buses through town or more bikes and pedestrian-friendly? Like, do we want to think about making those updates to parking requirements? And I know that's kind of a controversial subject because a lot of people are concerned about, well, I can't find a parking space right in front of where I want to go. So what do, what do people on the board think about? And this again would be to look at and to tackle potentially before the warrant closes in March.
I'm, 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 I'm not sure you have, for, for parking, I'm not sure you have enough time to do that.
Okay.
I, I think you could look at all of the parking requirements and, and focus on a couple key ones and, and move forward with, you know, either changing, modifying a couple or, or adding, adding new new requirements. The problem, the problem with the parking requirements is that it's, it, it, it lumps so many things together in certain pots. And other things are separate that, you know, sometimes, you know, they, they just, you know, 250 square feet per, you know, office. Well, you know, there, yeah, I, I think you could have a conversation with the building commissioner on, you know, where he has found it difficult to, you know, to determine what the parking requirement is for a particular use. You know, basically the, the round peg in the square hole, you know, problem. And look at changing a few things. But as you said, you know, parking is a very personal and contentious thing for many people. So I think you could, I think you could do near term and, and focus on a couple of things, but not a completely, you know, sweeping amendment to the whole entire section.
So this is under Mobility and Transportation. Goal five, develop an approach to parking that balances the principles of sustainability with the town's economic goals, including managing existing parking spaces and providing parking options for the residential community and visitors outside of the village centers. And, you know, there's, there's, there's four actions, you know, associated with that. One of which was reduce parking requirements near village centers and other specific areas while requiring multi-modal features. And so that's, that's the context within where we're kind of having this discussion. And it might not be a near-term thing because like you're saying, that might be multiple changes or changes might need to take place after there is more public transportation available, then it might make more sense to make the changes.
And, and I also think, you know, there's the reality right now where people won't or aren't taking public transportation. And there will be a strong resistance to reducing, you know, any parking. So.
Yeah, I think that's important. I, I, so I, I still think it's important in terms of supporting our goal. But I think that this might not be the right time for it. So just for that reason alone, that might become a, a medium-term priority. And, and others, please speak up and, and let, let us know about your feelings on parking.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, I mean, the state took away the grant for the shuttle. Or, I mean, so, you know, I would say, yes, if, if we had, you know, the shuttle going, then by all means, we should be looking at reducing parking. But I think given, you know, the pandemic and, you know, the, that realization that we don't have an alternative. But I can say that the town is in conversations with the, you know, the National Park and looking at a, you know, potential, you know, downtown and park-type shuttle. So we may be able to, you know, piggyback off of that in a couple of years.
I, I think it's worth keeping on there, like I said, for, for the medium term, two to five years. I, I, I don't, I don't think we want it to completely fall off. But, I mean, that being said, I would, I would encourage, you know, people on the board to review that, that second tab where there's kind of a, the more comprehensive list. And the ones that are highlighted are, you know, are the ones that, I mean, all of the ones on there were, had planning board or planning division related, you know, associated with it. But the highlighted ones were, tended to be the ones that we were had been most focused on or hadn't talked about. But I mean, I think all that's left on our list right here is is, for the near term, is not much. It's really kind of what we were working on, which is Thro Business District. We've already got two family home, you know, on, on there. So did we add any, any other bylaw amendments that we would be working towards for this year's town meeting? Oh, tree, tree preservation by law. So I think we're still within kind of our, what our original goals for the year were.
Just a question about the parking. Isn't parking is one of the, let's say, the bottlenecks for the revitalization of the business districts? I think, because, because a lot of time because of parking requirements, like you cannot put a coffee shop somewhere or I don't know, I don't like this. I, I know in, in Cambridge, they're, they're changing a lot of the parking requirements only for this purpose. But of course, the different, completely different dynamics there for the, they're reducing parking requirements for allowing more restaurants. And because, because that's one of the big problems, basically, when you're having, going to have a restaurant or anything that's sit down, basically, coffee shop, it's, it's a parking requirement. But I don't know here if it makes sense for us to look at that aspect of parking requirements where if I'm making, if this is making sense.
Parking requirements per use?
Yeah, per use, yeah.
I, I think that's what Elizabeth was saying. We may, that's, that's a pretty big fish to fry.
I see, okay.
And we might want to look at maybe some of them. I, I still think it's, I still think it's worth putting on our list and, but coordinating it with the timing so that our, our recommendations can be can be aligned with, with the, the climate that we're in. And I think we can do somewhere before that. We, we've got that, that study because there was a lot about shared parking. And I don't think our current parking requirements take that into account. And so I, I think there's, I think there's a lot of room that, that we can, you know, improve, like you're saying, those parking requirements per use. So I'd like to wrap up this discussion if other people don't have anything. And Elizabeth will, will go to the top of the list. We don't have a lot of people on the line, public, but if there are public comments that you'd like us to capture while we're making notes on our sheet, I'd like to open it up and, and if you raise your hand, we'll, we'll call on you. And then meantime, Elizabeth, can you scroll up so we can see those more near-term ones we said? We're doing the two-family. We're going to do the tree preservation by law. We're looking into, we're looking into all Thro Business District. And then we're looking into meeting with the ZBA about FAR change and evaluating that. And then the, the rest of the ones we talked about were more medium-term, kind of next two to five years and, and what we need to arm ourselves with so that we're ready to take action at, at that point. All right. So I see no hands up from the public. And no hands up from the board. Yeah, it, it's not, it's not over yet. So if you're looking at that list of items or the long-range plan itself and something bubbles to the top and, and you say, you know what, this, this should be a priority, we should be working on that. Please bring that to our next meeting so that we, we capture that in enough time to make that happen.
Sorry, I can't raise my hand.
I didn't mean to ignore you. Thank you. Could you just state your name and address again for the record? We'd like to hear from you.
Sue Felsch in 19 Sunny Side Lane. I think that raise hand option, oh, there it is. Sorry, never mind. I would like to encourage the board to fold form-based code into the Thro Depot rezoning plan. And here is why. I was a member of the West Concord Task Force and West Concord Advisory Committee way back when, and we did some things in our proposed zoning changes, which were adopted, which were not great, but we were forced into for the lack of form-based code. For example, we forbade all residential use on ground floors. We did that because we didn't want any residential uses on main streets detracting from the business nature, the, the retail nature of the business district. But there's no reason why one couldn't have housing units off of frontage, off of main streets, on side streets, or in places that are on neither side nor main streets. And so that's taking away from flexibility for property owners and taking away from the ability to provide housing on, for the residents of Concord. I can dig up a couple of spots in West Concord where it would have been entirely appropriate. And a second reason is that it gives less flexibility as to business height and setbacks. You really don't want to have a 35-foot building right up against the property line on the south side of the street because it blocks all of the sunlight. But on the north side of the street, there's no harm in it as long as it's not considered out of use with the village character of Concord, which in my opinion, it would not be out of character. So there are two reasons why it would be very useful to incorporate form-based code into the Thro Depot District while its zoning is being redesigned. First of all, so that people didn't leap ahead and do inappropriate things having to do with blocking sunlight. And second of all, so that people had more flexibility as to how to arrange their properties based on where housing might go. And of course, it would also be really good in West Concord. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking up. I'm sorry, we, we didn't unmute you. So Elizabeth, we're talking about pulling out the design guidelines for the business district, Thro Business District. I mean, which would essentially, you know, kind of mirror the West Concord Design Guidelines. I mean, they'd be different, but in terms of a timeline, is that realistic to do? Or could that be a second phase? So first phase?
It could be, it could be a second phase.
So then I, let's capture that as, as an option, knowing the timeline for what we're proposing for Thro Business District and then maybe.
I, I can send Chris an email and ask him, you know, for his opinion on how to, the first phase, second phase and, and.
Okay.
But I, I can, I can tell you it's and I'll, I'll pose the question to him.
Yeah. And, and, and our, our redevelopment of the Thro Business District, I think we really were thinking that was a, a five to 10-year redevelopment, like a long-term plan. So, you know, the first step would be making these changes to zoning. And then the second step would be, you know, developers, you know, taking initiative and making changes, which is going to take a little time. So perhaps the development of any form-based code based on these design guidelines that come out of this first phase would coincide with the actual development itself. So. All right. So if there is no other discussion about that, and it will not be the last time you see the long-range plan, I hope. I hope that it comes before the board kind of every year. So we make sure that we're, we're still working towards that and seeing what's relevant. And so I think the last items are the approval not required. It's a couple of plans.
Just one.
Okay.
Fairly, fairly simple A and R plan. This is the end of Monument Farm Road, you know, off Monument Street. And the property owner owns both lots and they're just moving the lot line. It's currently right here. And they're just moving it over to here. So It's in the Residence Double A Zone District. And as you can see from the plan, this is a frontage exception lot currently. It has less than 200 feet. It currently has 160 feet, but then when you get to the front of the building, the lot widens out to over 200 feet, which is allowed under the frontage exception bylaw. So it will remain a frontage exception bylaw, even, you know, this is now being increased to 171 feet. It's still well over 200 feet at the front of the house. This lot has well over 200 feet and both are well over 80,000 square feet.
Thank you. Any questions for Elizabeth? I would, I would entertain a motion.
I'll go for it. I make a motion that the planning board should move to endorse the plan for H R R E LLC dated September 28, 2020 as approval not required because the plan is not a subdivision. Because every lot shown on the plan has the required area and frontage as required under the zoning bylaw and permitted utilizing the frontage exception on an adequate private way and authorize the chair, clerk, or town planner to endorse the plan.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
No, I'm second. Any, any other discussion? All right. I will take the, take the vote. Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Orbital?
Yeah.
Mr. Bazet?
Yes.
And Mr. Saya?
Yes.
And this is Ms. Ferguson. Yes. All right. Well, um, we will open it up for public comment, but was there any other updates from any board members or staff updates? None? Okay. Let me open it up for public comment. If, if you have not gotten to comment on something and are still hanging on, try raising your hand and we will unmute you. Otherwise, what, um, what's in store for us the next time we meet, Elizabeth?
Um, so your next meeting is November 10th.
Okay.
You, you have 1440, 1450 Main Street subdivision. Was intending to come back.
Yep.
You also have a new definitive subdivision. All of the materials are posted to the planning board's website for 48Y Fitchburg Turnpike, which is actually off 117. You can only get there from Sudbury. So. And also for November 8th, you have 13B Commonwealth Ave. So this is the, the vacant lot on Comm Ave and Beheral Street, the, the second phase of Brookside Square. They are coming before the planning board for a recommendation to the Board of Appeals to amend their initial special permit. To the original special permit allowed for a one-story commercial building on that lot. And as the board knows, they've been working with the West Concord Advisory Committee and the planning board and, and back and forth. And they are proposing a three-story building, commercial on the first floor, two floors of residential. And that requires some minor amendments to their special permit and site plan. So the planning board will be making a recommendation to the Board of Appeals on those changes.
Okay. Well, that, that sounds like a full meeting. All right. Well, if I see no, I see no other hands up, no other public comment and nothing else from the board. Thanks, everybody, for kind of wading through all of those, all of those action items that made it into the plan. And I think we'll adjourn the meeting at 9:34. See everybody on the 10th.
You have a good night, everyone.
Good night. Bye.